Council, let's get ready. Okay, where is Paul?
Christine Reeves is in the audience.
Yes, we need Paul. Anna? Anna? Have you seen Representative Reeves? I mean, excuse me. Councilwoman Paul McGaney. Yeah, real quickly.
I think Paul is in the restroom.
Okay. Reeves on the mind.
I know, I was just going to tell you she's here.
Yeah.
Is she speaking?
Uh, not that, maybe, I don't know. Yeah, there we go. All right. Welcome to the, I'll call it order, the Federal Way City Council meeting for May 6th of 2025. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone. It's great to see everybody. We are fortunate to have an honored guest. Representative Christine Reeves is with us. Let's give her a big round of applause. Representative Reeves, thank you so much for your service during the legislative session and before that and after that. And I'm sure it was, sure there's many stories to tell, exactly. And anyway, we'll have a chance to catch up at some point. Thank you for being here. All right. Okay, now, Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. Thank you, Ben. Everybody, this is Ben Miller, Communications Manager. Okay, so we've had a busy, busy time in the past couple of weeks. Pete von Reckbauer puts on what he likes to call the Good Eggs Breakfast. It was at Emerald Downs on April 16th. And a great opportunity to hear from, to hear from folks. And it was a good event. And Pete always brings great speakers. And again, Emerald Downs is a wonderful facility. We had the TAF Varsity Luncheon at Amazon in downtown Seattle. Ben and I went down there for that. The superintendent, as you can see the picture on the right, Superintendent Danny Pfeifer, Dr. Pfeifer and I were there. And we have the TAF Academy at Sahale there. And many of the TAF locations around the state were present. And Dr. Pfeifer and I went to all of the exhibitions that the students I had prepared. It was a very impressive luncheon and very impressive presentations. Next. Okay, then we had the All the World's a Stage Earth Day Event at the PAC on April 19th. And then on April 25th, we had the Pacific Christian Academy 40 Year Celebration. The picture on the right with me and Casey Treat at a portion of that dinner. That was one of, the Pacific Christian Academy is at the, the school at the church right there that Casey Treat had founded. So Christian Pay Center. Okay, next. Okay, we've got the Federal Way National League Jamboree on April 26th with the kids. We're great. It's great to see so many people out in the community. And you could see just the joy and they all lined up afterwards. And we're very fortunate to have such a great organization in our community. Also, Pete von Reckbauer was able to hand them a ceremonial check for a million dollars to be able to turf several, two of those fields. That was on Saturday, April 26th. Same day, we had Parks Appreciation Day, April 26th. That location there is at the Blueberry Fields by Brook Lake. There were at three locations, the Brook Lake location, the Celebration Park, and also the Steel Lake Annex. And a lot of work. Thank you all to all the volunteers. It was a great event. You could see the firefighters were present as well. Okay, then we had Comcast Day of Service with El Centro de la Raza on April 26th. These weekend days, we've been having four or five events per day. So they've been pretty busy. And that was a great event. It was Estela, Estela Atrega was, was present and as well as Comcast. And that was, again, an opportunity to celebrate the service of many people. The Korean School of Federal Way had its annual, its biannual fundraiser on April 26th. Again, the superintendent and I there getting our dinners. The fun thing was, we got our dinners, I think, 10 minutes before the dinner was over. So it was kind of funny. We were like, oh, we finally got them. So it was fun. Great event, really, really good event. And packed place at Sahale. Next. All right, we had Storming the Sound with Salmon on April 29th. Big thanks to EJ and his entire crew. And also to the superintendent, again, we were in that picture. And they had every fourth grader in Federal Way School District that cycled through. It was really amazing, you know, efficiency. As all the kids were getting off the buses, you had the, not only the teachers, but also the, the Public Works employees. And, and we had really a great time. And then in this, in these chambers on Friday, May 2nd, the Todd Beamer High School Progress Pushers that have been working through Todd Beamer High School. And that was a very great event as well. Next. Okay, then we had the Marine View Men's Breakfast on May 3rd. Had some gentlemen there that were talking about their recent trip to Guatemala. And the, that, that organization has sent literally dozens of people from this community to Guatemala. And they were talking about installing wood stoves, very efficient wood stoves, in some of the villages and all of the work that is done to help that area in the mountainous regions in Guatemala. Then also that same day, we went from there to the I'm Hooked on Fishing Kids Event at Steel Lake Park on May 3rd. I heard that there were about 1,500 kids and families, family members that were present for that. And I hope some of them caught a fish, but I didn't, despite my valiant efforts. And, but anyway, it was great. It was great to see so many kids and really great community event. Next. Okay, then we had Mastronaw's Mayor's Cup at Todd Beamer High School. Mastronaw, Richard Na, has been holding this Taekwondo championship here in Federal Way for years. He's normally had, his organization brings people from all over the region. Over the years, they normally have it at Decatur High School. I think last year they moved it to Federal Way High School. And this year they brought it over to, they had it over at Todd Beamer High School. And the place was packed with kids, families. It was absolutely fantastic. And the chief joined me there along with Richard Na and several other people. Then later that night, in what was the fifth event for the day, the Center Stage Fundraiser at Twin Light Golf and Country Club on May 3rd. And they just do such a phenomenal job. And it was really, really touching, many, you know, many members of the community, some dramatic performances and singing performances. And we were just, it was, we were just spoiled by all that and, and their, their crew there. It was absolutely fantastic. We're so fortunate to have Center Stage in our community. And we've got some folks here that are very involved in that organization. And they really do bring joy and the arts to our community. And it was, you know, it was my honor to be there along with Councilmember Honda was there as well and, and many members of the community. Okay, next. Okay, these are upcoming events. The Grand Opening Kent Kill Word on May 7th, that's tomorrow. This has been in the works for a long time. We're looking very much forward to that. That picture right there, the lower left, I believe, is, that building, the original cabin, I believe was built in 1936. And really one of the most historic buildings in, in Federal Way. And on the efforts really to take it back from nature. And we're very fortunate to have this grand reopening. The Federal Way Farmers Market opens this Saturday. That's May 10th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This is really the inaugural handover to the city. And we've brought Rose and David Eel and their daughter Carla have essentially turned this over to the city. There's been a passing of the baton. And it's, it's been going absolutely fantastic. A huge shout out to Bill Vedino, who has done so much to help facilitate this. Carla Kalabub is, was coming on board along with Vicki Chenoweth with the Parks Department and also my office, you know, with the help of Bill Vedino to get this launched. We're hoping next year that we're going to move the location, at least what we're planning now, over to, and this is what we're planning, discussing at the retreat, to move the Farmers Market over to the street that separates Town Square Park and the Performing Arts and Events Center. Before we did that, we have to get some ballards together or purchase them and, and plan to essentially block that portion of the street off while that's open. And we're working with Metro to be able to utilize that street. It's going to be a great opportunity to bring the Farmers Market truly into the downtown. And then we've got the Community Clothing Swap at the Tool Library on May 10th at 8:30 a.m. And swing on by and see what's there. And anyway, it's going to be a great opportunity. They do great things at the Tool Library. Next. Again, it's a very, very busy month. We've got the Bonsai Fest at Pacific Bonsai Museum, May 10th and 11th. We've got the Senior Health and Resource Fair at the Performing Arts and Events Center on May 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then we've got the Marine Hills Pool Parade on May 17th. One of the most historic events and one of the things we look forward to when they have the little parade and open up the Marine Hills Pool. Okay, then we've got our, one of our favorite events of the year, Touch a Truck. John, you want to tell us about what's all involved in Touch a Truck?
Touch a Truck is a great event. It's, they have lots of sponsors in the community, from our own city, from Public Works, PD. We have a tremendous amount of local businesses that provide trucks and equipment and fun stuff for kids. It's a great event. Wild Waves has been a great partner. Moving it over there has really allowed for a much better footprint and a better, better event overall. Looking very forward to it. It's going to be tons of fun. Please come out, bring the kids, bring the grandkids. And we're all kids when it comes to big trucks, right, Mayor?
That's right.
There you go. We'll all have a good time.
Exactly. All right, I remember the one year I got into hydroplane and then couldn't get out. It's a lot easier getting into one of those than it is getting out. Anyway, that's a long story. Okay, next. Okay, that's it. That concludes my report. Thank you, Ben. A great job. And thank you, Bill Vedino, who helped collect all that as well. Okay, now we are on to the most important part of the meeting, which is public comment. Please let us know what community you live in. Green means go, yellow means you've got about 30 seconds, and red means please stop. Everybody knows the rules. Let's go ahead and call them off. And please queue in the back. Diane Dobrowski, Dobloski, Rolski? Sorry. Jeremy Windsor and Susan Strong. Diane, how do you say your last name?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of this community. My name is Diane Dobrowski, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Sound Alliance. The Sound Alliance is a collaboration of nonprofit and faith-based organizations, educational associations, and labor unions dedicated to the common good. The Sound Alliance was one of the founding partners that established the Federal Way Day Center. This center has been a life center for many people, lifesaver for many people in our community. As a retired social worker who has worked with many unhoused people, I know firsthand how much a service like this is needed. 10 years ago, the city committed to supporting the Day Center. I was there when Mayor Farrell shook my former pastor's hand, Reverend James Kugel Komodo, and agreed to support this facility. I believe that the city should continue to honor this commitment. It is our civic responsibility to do so. As a person of faith, I also believe that this community has a moral obligation to serve those less fortunate than ourselves. Whether you have a religious affiliation or not, hopefully the saying, "Do unto others as you would have others do unto you," is part of your belief system. Yes, many of those people who visit the Day Center may have mental health and substance abuse issues. Unfortunately, we don't have emergency shelters or crisis care centers in this community who can provide a continuum of services that are so desperately needed. That's why so many people who are visiting the Day Center continue to hang around after closing because there just is nowhere else to go. Providing services, that's why so many, providing services at the Day Center is the least, I believe, that we can do. I urge the City Council to please stop pausing the funding of the Day Center and put the funding of the Day Center on the council's next meeting agenda. And I implore the City Council to vote yes on funding the Federal Way Day Center. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Diane. Jeremy Windsor.
I'm waiting for the clock to start over to make sure I'm on task. Well, thank you, Mayor, and everybody in the community. I always want to say that as well. One, I want to start off by saying thank you for showing up to enjoy some of those kids' presentation at Todd Beamer. And actually, thank you for showing that little clip too, because some of those youth were a little bummed that they didn't get to present in front of you and that there weren't more of you there. But I realize now coming that you've been really busy, so we'll take that in consideration. I'm not here on no specific topic except for, of course, always speaking for the youth. Again, my name is Jeremy Windsor. I work for Progress Pushers, a nonprofit organization that works with systematically impacted youth from 12 to 24. I know everybody in here, kind of, some people know me, some people don't. Some people will say, we haven't seen you in a long time. Seems like I've been gone out of Federal Way. I promise I've been right here, but I do work in every city. Sometimes I just blow my mind how many City Hall meetings or other things I find myself at speaking in front of public officers and things like that. But in this particular one, I want to say I am now in charge of Progress Pushers Federal Way, so I will be making sure that I'm more integrated into Federal Way. So you will see me more often and my team. Again, I appreciate you popping out. More of you guys should have came. This is the youth telling you what they see as issues in our community. And recently, I know there was just recently two murders in Federal Way, right? Those are things that I run to. I don't currently live here in Federal Way, but I'm here enough to be a resident. I live in Kent, but I'm in Seattle, I'm in Renton, I'm in Tacoma, I'm in Juvenile Halls. I'm in so many places. If you have an opportunity, support nonprofits, always like Progress Pushers and other ones that's really doing it right, that's really out here pouring into those youth, because eventually there will be the politicians, they will be the police, they will be, right? Everything else for us. So we got to make sure we continue to build them up. And when we have opportunities, I appreciate you guys letting us use this room. I appreciate everybody who showed up. Normally, I come to a City Hall meeting prior to, so I normally give you guys. So again, that's, that's my fault. I'm just spread pretty thin, I promise you. It's, it's tough sometimes doing God's work, but, but I'm willing to strap up. And I promise, I hope you guys are too, because as me being now more into Federal Way, I will make sure to be here to hold you guys accountable, to bring them youth in space, and to keep you guys pushing in the right direction, because we want our community the best community we can have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jeremy. And Jeremy, it was a great event. The kids did great. Please, please pass that along. All right, thank you very much. All right, Susan Strong.
Mayor Farrell, Council President Coach Mar, council members. I'm Susan Strong, and I live in Federal Way. I noticed in an article published in the Federal Way Mirror this week about two people who were charged and arrested with operating an illegal massage parlor in Federal Way. The investigation began in 2021 and was conducted from afar and up close for over two years. The people were charged with money laundering and prostitution. The state recommends they receive a minimum of 38 months in jail. This article caught my attention because I too have noticed a lot of massage parlors in Federal Way. In fact, two of us from stand-up Federal Way community took some time two months ago to drive around and have a look. I wrote down on a spreadsheet some of the names we noticed. Well, this was the start of my spreadsheet. I won't read the names. We were, I won't mention what area of town we were at, but it was near 336th. If you know what is also located down on 336th. My accomplice went to the door in a couple of cases, because she's just got a lot of nerve. And she went to see if she could get a massage for her older aunt waiting in the car. That was me. One business opened up the door and the worker was only wearing a bathrobe. And they said they couldn't help me. So we went to another place, and the next business lady came to the door wearing a raincoat over the top of her pajamas and told my friend she could not help us. And none of them would give us an appointment even for a later massage. The Mirror in their article stated that the King County Sheriff's Office was involved in this case. I'm interested in bringing more attention to the problem of illegal massage parlors in Federal Way. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Chief, let's talk about that tomorrow. Thank you. Okay, and also, going back to the Emerging Issues and Report from the mayor, we do have a report, there was a comment at the last council meeting by a resident about the Town Square Park bathroom and it being locked. We put that on the agenda to follow up on that, as promised at that last meeting. And John Hutner, Parks Director, can you give us a brief update?
Yes, Mayor. So we found out about that same time you did here at the meeting on the 15th. On the 16th, by noon, we had signs on each door at the, at the park. And I've got pictures of them right here at my desk. And want everybody to know that we don't lock the bathrooms. We do have a fairly high incidence of vandalism at certain parks. Town Square, no exception. We get on it as quickly as we can. And if people would, and that number is posted on the kiosk there and was posted. We put it in a more prominent spot, so if there's anybody who has any problem, we'll get there as quickly as humanly possible. Where usually we have someone available very close, even on the weekends, that can come and take care of the problem, whether the bathroom's just a mess or if it's truly locked, or if someone has locked themselves in. Police always help us with, we need help. They're there quickly, as quickly as they can be, and help us out. So, but we do not lock bathrooms routinely, except in winter months when we try to do the major maintenance in those bathrooms. And we do lock them up in the winter, which is the case for most organizations. A lot of bathrooms are locked up. We do keep several open during the winter months, Town Square being one of them that we keep open. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Montana?
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we lock them at night when we close the gates? Or are you saying they're unlocked all times?
No, no, we lock them when we close the park hours, unless it's an athletic facility like Celebration Park or Steel Lake where we have ball fields. Dawn to dusk are the park hours, and we have security come in and close the gates and lock the bathrooms, check the bathrooms and lock the bathrooms at close for all bathrooms. Any bathrooms open 24 hours.
Okay, just wanted to show that. Thanks.
All right. Okay, all right, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, now moving on to item five, presentations. We have a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, May of 2025. Councilmember Walsh.
Whereas the annual observance of Mental Health Awareness Month was founded in 1949 to highlight the importance of mental well-being, educate the public, reduce stigma, and promote support for those affected by mental health, health conditions. And whereas half of the population will experience some type of mental health challenge during the course of their lifetimes. And whereas one in five adults in the United States experience mental illness each year. And whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas the theme of the 2025, for 2025 is community, focusing on celebrating the power and importance of community for mental well-being. And whereas having a safe and positive community can create strong connections with others, providing a sense of belonging, belonging, safety, support in hard times, and a sense of purpose. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and City Council members of the City Council of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month and call upon the community to increase awareness and understanding of the importance of mental health and access to supportive services. Signed the 6th day of May, 2025.
All right. Isn't someone not here to accept? Audrey Jones or Cassandra Riley? Yeah. Cassandra Riley from Valley Cities Federal Way Clinic Manager and Audrey Jones from Valley Cities Development Director. And also Peyton Stanfield, the Valley Cities Marketing Specialist.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Liz Farmer. I'm the manager of school-based programs at Valley Cities. And I believe my name wasn't put on the list, so I apologize. I just wanted to say thank you for acknowledging the real challenge that folks have in our community around mental health. And the more that we can do this kind of thing, the greater the chance that we're going to reduce the stigma that prevents people from going into services and from their families supporting them in the ways that they need to gain access to services and accept that their challenges are real and have a real impact in their lives. So I wanted to say thank you guys for doing that, as well as all of the support that you give our agency in providing services in the community. We've really appreciated the opportunity, especially my program where you guys really support, work within the schools, and we get to meet youth individually and as a group and really just provide access to services right where they're at. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, the next proclamation is Proclamations for Older Americans Month from May 2025, Councilmember Honda to Federal Way Senior Advisory Commission Members.
Thank you. So can the Senior Advisory Commission members come to the podium, please? Yep, and I'll read the proclamation and come down and give it to you. Whereas the City of Federal Way is home to a growing number of older Americans who contribute themselves to our community. And whereas our neighborhoods and community are enriched by the diverse experiences, strength, and wisdom of people born in different generations, including the Greatest Generation, born before 1928, the Silent Generation, born between 1928 and 1945, and Baby Boomers, born between 1946 and 1964. And whereas in 2019, the City Council created the Senior Advisory Commission, recognizing the value of utilizing older Americans' experience, knowledge, and viewpoint to advise the City Council on important issues facing the senior population. And whereas the 2025 theme for Older Americans, Older Americans Month has flipped the script on aging, focusing on transforming how society perceives, talks about, and approaches aging. And whereas the City Council, the City of Federal Way recognizes the contributions made by our older adult population, the many opportunities for staying active and engaged while aging, and highlighting the chances for purpose, exploration, and connection that come with aging. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and City Council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Older Americans Month and invite the community to join with the older adults in their lives at the 2025 Senior Health and Resource Fair at the Federal Way Performing Arts and Events Center on May 15th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Signed the 6th day of May, 2025. And as someone who is privileged to work with the Senior Commission, we do have a meeting tomorrow at 2 o'clock, 2 to 4, and you're all invited to attend. It's in the room right next to us. It's really an honor to work with this group of people. They are very, very active. And boy, they're hard to keep up with. And they have done so much since 2019. It's, it's one of... It's one of...it's just been an honor to work with them. So you guys, you want to say something?
Hi, I would like to say something. I'm Lana Bostic. I'm the chair of this commission this year. I wanted to just share, thanks for what you said, that at our commission meeting, we were talking about how we really didn't like the words "older Americans." So I looked up some of the synonyms for "older," and they're not all that great. It's elderly, geriatric, over the hill, senescent, which I'm not sure, long-lived, long in the tooth, unyoung, octogarian, oldish, retired, yeah, mature, and one called...what was the other one? Yeah. Yeah, middle-aged, oldish. So we thought, yeah, we didn't like that too much. So we just...or I've decided, and they're going to follow me, that we would like to have next year, instead of having it be Older American Month, at least in Federal Way, we're going to try to get some alternatives. So some of them that I saw, that I found is called Vibrant Generations Month, Celebrating Lifelong Impact Month, Honoring Experienced Voices, Active Citizens Recognition, Engaged Community Leaders, Seasoned Wisdom Month, and Experienced Advocates Month. So next year, I think we'll...we need to have a little bit more positivity in what we're thinking about ourselves because we are elderly maybe, but we're wiser and we're still glad to be out in the community and helping and working. So, yeah, let's hear it. Let's hear it. So, thank you. Thank you. And I also want to just re-invite everyone to our Health and Resource Fair that we're having next Thursday at the PAC from 10:00 to 1:00. We have 75 vendors this year, which is going to be great. It's a really fun, fun event, and there's just a lot of fun people to meet, a lot of resources, so hopefully everybody will be there. So thanks very much for the proclamation.
Lana, I nominate, you should only hope to live this long month.
Oh, I don't know. That's a thousand. Thank you.
My mother would have called all of you young whippersnappers. She was...lived to 103, so anyway.
Next, we have the Asian Pacific and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2025. Councilmember Honda to Cilly Savasu.
Do you have Councilmember Sephardosan read that one?
Okay. Councilmember Sephardosan. We have the Executive Director of the Pacific Islander Community Association of Washington, the PICAWA.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Susan. I'd like CV Savusa to come up to the podium while I read the proclamation. And I just want to acknowledge and say that Cilly and I have been serving on communities of opportunity, King County-based, for a number of years. And Cilly is really an amazing advocate, and I'm thankful that you're here in our city. That said, whereas Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month was first observed as a week-long celebration in 1997, amended to a full month on May 9, 1990. And whereas the Federal Asian Pacific American Council has named the 2025 theme to be a legacy of leadership and resilience, marking years of trailblazing by AANHPI leaders paving the way for future generations. And whereas throughout history, Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders have transformed adversity into opportunities for public service, efficiency, and innovations, resulting in lasting change that resonates beyond our community and with positive impacts on the world. And whereas this resilience is woven into the fabric of success and is a testament to the unwavering spirit of dignity and strength. And whereas Federal Way is proud to be home to a large Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander population that contributes greatly to the prosperity and enrichment of our city. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and call this observance to the attention of all our residents. Signed this 6th day of May 2025. So if you want to make a comment, go ahead while I run down there.
Thank you. Shout out to the older Americans. I'm one too. Mayor Farrell, councilmembers, my name is Cilly Savusa. I'm the Executive Director of PICA, the Pacific Islander Community Association. We're right down the street. And Mayor Farrell, I promise, I feel bad that we keep forgetting to just put stuff up around the activities that we do as part of PICA. I know we had a big pageant that we just did at Federal Way High School, maybe a couple of months ago, a month, a little month and a half ago. I feel bad as you're reading. So I promise, if I come here again next year and you don't have a picture of one of our events, that's on me. I just wanted to say we're really happy to be here in Federal Way. The NHPI population is a little over 3,000. We're really...we have a growing, not only Polynesian but also Micronesian population and Marshallese, growing Marshallese and Chukies families that are here. So we're here to help. We're here to share information, to educate all of our partner organizations. We want to partner, so I'm really honored to be here. Martina is our Director of Community Services, and I wanted to give her just a couple of seconds just to talk really briefly about what we do. And then also, I have a suggestion. Our elder program is called the Cultural Weavers. And so, you know, weaving the stories of our culture. So I just wanted to say that. So Martina?
Thank you all for having us today. We have a couple...a lot of programs and services that we do provide at the Pacific Islander Community Association. Like Cilly mentioned, we have the Cultural Weavers Program, focusing on elders, providing space to just come and mingle and hang out. We do have the Pacifica Food Network Program. We recently opened up a food pantry, opening it up to the community to have access to food. We also have Pacifica Wayfinders. That's our youth program. Their focus is on...they have Healing Circle and Cultural Roots for the Healing Circle. It's just providing space for our native and Pacific Islanders youth to come together and share their life experience with one another and find support among their peers. Our last but not least, the Wellness Navigation Program. This program is...we serve the community by doing direct service support, providing basic need, housing support, healthcare, and insurance enrollment, emergency, short-term relief fund, and other local resources. Yeah, that's about...we do a lot of things, you know, just providing services and trying to find ways to break barriers within our community.
And Mayor, finally, I just wanted to put on your radar and the councilmembers that we're looking for another office location to house PICA. We're just down the street now in the little...is it Omega? Stevie and I.
Yep.
And so we are looking for spaces more conducive to family-type activities. And so we love Celebration Park that we've used several times in many spaces in Federal Way, but we actually are looking for a new home. And we want to be here, a lot of our population, this is a central city, to where our families come from all around the region. So I just wanted to say that, too.
Oh, well, thank you. And we've got our economic development crew here. Meredith, who is for confirmation tonight, perhaps you guys could connect and we can work on helping you find some locations. And Juliana Labreak as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy.
Okay. Thank you so much. And we look forward to...well, we'll be at those. We'll have...make sure that we be at those pageants and all those locations. Very good. Thank you. In fact, actually, Ben, would you make sure you connect with her and make sure that we're on the same page? We'll get you in touch with Ben Miller, our communications person. We'll be all over it. Okay. All right. Next, we've got the proclamation for Police Week, May 11th through 17th of 2025. Councilmember Dovey to Chief Wong.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. The proclamation is for National Police Week. Whereas there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving federal, state, and local agencies, including the 145 dedicated members currently serving in the Federal Way Police Department. And whereas the City of Federal Way Police Department was established October 1996 to protect and serve the citizens, residents, and visitors to the city. And whereas National Police Week was established in 1962 with President Kennedy's proclaiming May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day and the calendar week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas each year, National Police Week recognizes the officers that are serving, have served, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, including two officers of the Federal Way Police Department. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim May 11th to May 17th National Police Officers Week and publicly salute the service of law officers in our community and communities across the nation. Signed this 6th day of 2025. And this is...I'm glad I get to present this. I actually was on the council when we formed our police department 29 years ago. I think Andy and I were some of the first on that project, so this is a great honor to present it to our great police force.
Please address our contingent.
Thank you. Good evening. On behalf of the entire police department, I want to sincerely thank Mayor Farrell and the City Council for this proclamation in honor of National Police Week. This recognition carries a deep meaning for the dedicated men and women of the Federal Way Police Department who serve with unwavering commitment each and every day. National Police Week is a time to reflect on the sacrifices and the contribution of law enforcement professionals across the country. We're truly grateful to have our efforts acknowledged here at home. It is both humbling and encouraging to know that our work is seen, valued, and supported by our city's leadership. This gesture not only honors our department but also reinforces our shared commitment to the safety and well-being of the Federal Way community. We remain steadfast in our mission to serve with integrity, professionalism, and dedication. Once again, thank you for this recognition for the upcoming week and for your continued support. Thank you very much.
Is this good? Can you see us all or...
Come on. We need to book it over here.
There's plenty of room.
It's an order, Commander.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now, we are on to item E. Is Betty Taylor here? Betty Taylor, come on down to the podium. We've got the Mayor Proclamation for the National Day of Prayer on May 1st. So obviously, today's the 6th. As Betty makes her way to the podium, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation for National Day of Prayer. Whereas on April 17, 1952, the Congress of the United States approved a joint resolution that was signed into law by President Harry Truman to provide for setting aside an appropriate day as a national day of prayer. Public Law 82-32466 Stat 64. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is an ecumenical observance held on the first Thursday at May, inviting people of all faiths to pray for the United States of America. And whereas the history of our nation is indelibly marked with the role prayer has played in the lives of individuals and the nation. And whereas historically, our greatest leaders have turned to prayer in times of crisis and thanksgiving. And whereas the virtues of prayer reflect a common bond, hopes and aspirations, sorrows and fears, remorse and renewed resolve, thanks and joyful praise, peace and love. Now therefore, I, the undersigned mayor of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 1, 2025, as the National Day of Prayer in the City of Federal Way, in keeping with the wishes of the Congress of the United States and encouraging all residents to join in this special observance. Signed this 29th of April, 2025. Jim Farrell, Mayor.
So I have to say a special thanks...you guys can hear me. Okay. Special thanks to the mayor, councilman, all those city officials who played a great part in receiving this proclamation and recognizing the importance of prayer in the City of Federal Way. I'm expressing gratitude, and I'm feeling very humble in receiving this, and I say thank you so much. I'm grateful for the staff. I'm grateful for the mayor, the staff, the people that worked to basically put this together, and I appreciate you all so much, and I appreciate just receiving this. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Now we are on to item number six, Council Committee and Regional Committee Reports. First, we've got Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee. That is Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah. First, I'd like to thank those who participated in the Parks Appreciation Day, Saturday before last. A lot was done. I understand more than 200 volunteers, more than 600 hours of service were provided. It is greatly appreciated. It helps make our community the wonderful place that it is. Secondly, in the mayor's current events, he talked about storming the Sound with releasing the salmon. And it was the first time I went there and I was...you know, I thought that they'd be, you know, dumping a bunch of fish into the lake there, but instead, each kid got a cup with a little salmon fry in it, and most of them named it. And then they released it down a chute, and it went into the lake. And I mean, it was lots of fun, you know? And the kids were learning about nature, about ecology, about the life cycle of fish, and it was...it was great. It was great. A great community event. Let's see, our...oh, I have a question for, I guess for AJ or John. At the Touch a Truck event, is the Snuffleupagus going to be there so the kids can see it and touch it?
Councilmember Walsh, I cannot reveal that and ruin the surprise.
Okay. All right. That's accepted. All right. And lastly, our next committee meeting will be a week from today, Tuesday, May 13th, right here at 5:00. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we've got the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Dovey.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually like vibrant as the word for elders. Anyway, land use and transportation, there's been a lot going on tonight. You'll see some voting and moving forward on ADUs and zoning things we're changing. Last night at our LUTC meeting, we had a very good discussion, which I think a lot of people want to follow, about the new lot zoning in Federal Way and how many buildings can be put on an acre and how lot lines can be adjusted. I think it will actually change the character of Federal Way over the years and make affordable housing hopefully more prevalent and more middle housing in Federal Way. So those of you that are interested in that would probably want to be here at the next council meeting when there will be a staff presentation, when it moves from the beginning stages to an ordinance because it's a major change in our city, and we're mandated to do this for the state law. And then our next meeting will be in June, the first Monday, which is...can't remember the date.
The 3rd, I believe.
The 3rd, here in the council. The 3rd, here in the council chambers at 5:00. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee, otherwise known as Fedrec, Councilmember Tran.
Mayor, Mr. Paul Miedenio will report out.
Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. Fedrec met on April 22nd, so about two weeks ago. Tonight, we have four items on the consent agenda, mostly financial reports, APs, vouchers, auto theft prevention grant, and also a backfilling of a lieutenant. Our next meeting will be on May 27th at 5:00 PM in council chambers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Logic Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Sephard Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing to report, and our meeting for me has been canceled. Thank you.
Okay, great. The regional committees report, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Friday night, I attended the Federal Way High School drama performance called Mean Girls, and it was absolutely amazing, I really, really enjoyed it. They, you still have an opportunity to see it next week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and I know TJ's drama performance starts on Thursday next week, so support our kids throughout the city, they love it when people come to these kind of things, and it was just a lot of fun. The fishing derby on Saturday, there were over 1,000 pre-sold tickets to that, there were a lot of vendors, I'd like to thank the Parks Department for such an amazing program that they put on, and thank you to Wilbert Warren and Jerry Warren, because they're the guys who actually do all the work on, get the fish there, and get the whole thing planned, and they do this every year, and it means a lot to them, and they really enjoy coming to Federal Way and having this program at Federal Way. Council President Coach Mar, Councilmember Walsh, and myself met with school board members Lakeisha Phillips, and Vice President Trudy Davis, we meet about once a month, and we planned our next coffee with the school board and council, it's going to be at the farmer's market on July 26th, and from 10 to 12, rain or shine, we will have tents if it rains, but it's supposed to be really sunny that day and really hot, so please come, we'd love to see you, and then you can take advantage of the market and do your shopping, July's a great time for the market, farmers are all there, the vendors are all there, it's really a great time for the market. May 14th is the next PIC meeting, and we will be talking about the emergency medical services levy renewal, the solid waste division rate changes, and there's been a lot of discussion among cities with that, regional boards and committee updates, and levies and ballot measure updates, and there are some levies coming up on the ballots this summer. So, council, it's online, you can get the information and join us, it's at 7:00 on May 14th, which is a Wednesday. And tomorrow, Camp Killworth is reopening, the reopening celebration starts at 4:00, and I have been waiting for Camp Killworth to reopen since before they closed, I love Camp Killworth, it's probably my favorite place in Federal Way, besides a popcorn machine at the concession stand, said that for you. But I am so excited, they're going to have day camp down there this summer, and years and years and years ago, I was co-chairman of Cub Scout Day Camp down there, I was on crutches, I'd just been in a car accident the day before, it was kind of a mess, the scout organization didn't really want me on the property, I don't think, because I was a liability to them at that point, but it is such an amazing facility, and we are so lucky that the YMCA and Forterra purchased the property and restored it as a camp, and have done so much work down there, it's, we are just so, so lucky, and our kids are lucky, and their kids are lucky. And so, if you can, you know, if you can't make it tomorrow, come down sometime during, when the day camps are open, it is just an amazing, what they've done is amazing, and they have a lot of work still left to do, the Rotary Lodge, which the mayor showed in his photos, is phase two of the reconstruction of the camp, and they're going to be doing a fundraising campaign for that, it's going to cost a lot of money, the lodge was, has been damaged by vandalism throughout the years, but it is a historic piece of property, it's a historic building, and they are determined to get it back to what it was, only a little bit better, and so, anyway, we are so fortunate, and I am so happy, so, I even have a t-shirt to wear tomorrow. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Council President, report, Council President Coach Mar.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, Councilmember Sephard Dawson and Councilmember Honda and I visited the El Centro de la Raza main building in Seattle, and went through to see what their different programs were, which is going to be some of the things that we're going to be having here in Federal Way at El Centro de la Raza, and that was very interesting, and so, very nice of them to take us through the building. I'm not sure, Mayor, we're going to, can I go ahead and tell them what Congressman Smith is?
Yeah.
So when we went to Washington DC, we learned two things, one of which we have a million, 1.2 million, I think, is in being held, it's been approved, but it's going to be released, I think, at some point in the near future for some of our downtown work, but we received news from our trip to Washington DC this time, that there will be some money put into the future budgets, it may take up to three years, the total of 2.5 million, which we hope will go for the day center, to hopefully move the day center from its current location over to where the Red Lion is at current, because then it will be more centrally located, be in a better location for people to get to, than how it's to get to, because it will be right next to Light Rail, plus, that's going to be the overnight shelter, and so we think that might be a good marriage between the two, and so that's sort of our future hope, so we won't have that problem we have right now with the day center, with the folks that are trying to stay in front of the building where it is, which is located in an area of businesses, and so hopefully that will work out, but we do have 2.5 million going through the budget process, hopefully to help us in that planning process. The other thing that y'all need to realize is that there's not enough money, not as much money coming to our food banks, and so the multi-service center food bank is now, I think you've read in the mirror that it's closing down, in its current location, and being moved over to the 272nd Park Highway location where the workforce housing is, and so, what you need to understand is that they are desperately in need of donations, because they aren't getting the same amount, I believe, from the federal government that they had in the past, and so, not only that food bank, but also the food bank east of the freeway, which is over off of Military Road and about, would you say 270, 75th, or 2? The food bank east of the freeway, senior center?
It's on 254th, I believe, just past near 5 miles.
Okay, so they also have a food bank for low-income seniors over there, they're both very much in need of donations, so if you wouldn't mind keeping that in mind.
Not just low-income seniors, but everybody who may need it.
Correct.
It's 254th, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, 254th.
I mean, 3, 354th.
I'm sorry, 354th, okay, so that's a really important thing, so if you keep that in mind, you know, to support our, as a community, we've been wonderful about supporting each other when we're in need, and so hopefully, if you'll just keep that in mind when, especially during the summer months, people are just as hungry in the summer months as they are in the winter months, so keep it in mind, please, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next, we've got the consent agenda, these items have gone through committee and can be passed all at one time, I'll read the items and ask if a council member would want an item pulled for separate consideration. Item A, minutes for the April 15th, 2025, regular and special meeting minutes. B, AP vouchers, 31625 through 41425, payroll vouchers, 33125. Monthly financial report, March 2025. D, request authorization to apply for the 2025 through 2027 Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority Watch Butt Grant. And item E, backfilling a police lieutenant position for the Butts Sound Auto Theft Task Force, PSATT. Councilor, are there any items you want pulled for separate consideration? All right, Councilmember Coach Mar.
Thank you, Mayor, I move approval of the consented gen items A through E.
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass unanimously. All right, we're on to item eight, council business. All right, youth commission appointments, Councilmember Walsh.
I move the following appointments to the youth commission. Jayuna Kier as a voting member for a term to expire August 31, 2025, Kara Song as a voting member for a term to expire August 31, 2026, and Claire Kim as a voting member for a term to expire August 31st, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
But a motion, a second, to confirm those three individuals. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously, thank you.
That's our former youth commission chair, he's happy that we appointed him.
Very good. All right, Parks and Recreation Commission appointments, Councilmember Walsh.
I move the following appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Wendell and Morton as a voting member for a term to expire April 30th, 2028, and Gerald Knudsen as a reappointment voting member for a term to expire April 30th, 2028.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, they pass unanimously. Item C, Diversity Commission appointments, Councilmember Walsh.
I move the following appointments to the Diversity Commission, George Houston as voting member for a term beginning June 1, 2025, and to expire May 31, 2028, Chika Onye Jiaaka as a reappointed voting member for a term beginning June 1, 2025, and to expire May 31, 2028, Evan Cook as a voting member for a term to expire May 31, 2026, and Allison Fine as an alternate member for a term to expire May 31, 2026.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
I do have one quick question.
Yeah, Councilmember McGee.
Legal, I have a question, what is the authority of council for memberships after they're appointed?
So the question is, is what's the authority for council to be able to remove a member once they've been appointed? The answer is that council is tasked to determine that that member is not fulfilling their responsibilities to the satisfaction of city council, so it's very much a discretionary choice on the part of city council.
Okay, thank you, that was all I needed.
But it would take just a simple majority vote by the council?
That's correct, a simple majority vote.
Great, thank you very much. All right, any other questions? Okay, there's been a motion, a second, we've had discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass unanimously.
I'm abstaining.
Oh, you abstain, okay. All right, did you get that? Great, thank you very much. Okay. All right, now we move on to item D, council confirmation of Economic Development Director, Meredith Neal, we'll have a staff presentation from Brian Davis, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council, these next two items are nominations for department heads that the council will confirm, the first is for the Economic Development Director position, and the mayor is nominating Meredith Neal. Meredith is, she comes from the city of Puyallup, she holds a master's in organizational leadership from Antic University, and a BA in urban planning and community development from the Evergreen State College, so she's a planner after my own heart, so it's great to have that onboard again. She, as I mentioned, she's currently with the City of Puyallup, serving as the Director of Development and Permitting Services, and also with the City of Puyallup, she served as the Economic Development Manager, so a great combination for this position here at Federal Way. Her experience also includes roles as Director of the Manufacturing Industrial Council for the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber of Commerce, a Project Manager at MRF Construction Incorporated, and Environmental Planner at Parsons Rinkerhoff, and happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? All right, Council President Coach Mar.
I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Meredith Neal as the Economic Development Director.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations, Meredith, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, well, thank you very much, Mayor and city council members, I'm excited about the opportunity to work with all of you in economic development here in the City of Federal Way, and I definitely look forward to engaging with local businesses, community members, and nonprofits, it's been wonderful to hear from some of the nonprofits in the community this evening, as we all work on enhancing the local economy and improving the quality of life for residents here, so thank you.
Welcome, Meredith.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Meredith. All right, now, we are on to item E, council confirmation of City Clerk, Heather Dumlow.
Okay, thank you, again, this is for clerk, and the mayor's nominating Heather Dumlow to fill this position, she came to us from the city of Burien, so another municipal partner in everything that we do, helping us provide personnel, so glad to have Heather onboard. So she holds a Bachelor's in Science in Health Informatics and Health Information Management from the University of Washington, and is a certified municipal clerk and certified public records officer, and as I mentioned before, she was here, she was the city clerk for the city of Burien, and also served as the deputy city clerk for Burien, and before that, she worked as a legal administrative assistant and public works administrative secretary for the city of Renton. Happy to answer any questions about Heather.
Council, any questions? All right, Council President Coach Mar.
I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Heather Dumlow as the city clerk.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's official, Heather, Heather, would you like to say a few words? Okay. All right, thank you very much, welcome. When it was announced that we were going to hire Heather, the mayor of Burien, who's a friend, and we get to see each other pretty regularly, regional meetings and National League of Cities, he called me up, and he goes, God, I cannot believe you got Heather, so he was, it was very, I could tell you, they were very, very pleased with her performance, and had even said she was one of the best city clerks they'd ever had, so we're so fortunate to have you, thank you, and Meredith, we're very fortunate to have you, thank you so much, your reputation, all the work that you do precedes you, I want to let you know, I was in Washington DC, I was at a dinner with several council members, and a friend of mine knew that we had applications out, I don't know if I've told you this yet, Meredith, but I was at this dinner, and I get called away, and I stepped outside, and it was a long time regional player, and he didn't even know your name, and he goes, hey, I hear you guys are, you know, taking applications for your Economic Development Director, there's somebody in Puyallup, you've got to make sure that you get, that she just has done a phenomenal job, and he didn't even know your name, so, the next day, I get, when I finally get back to Washington State, I talk to our folks here, and I asked Brian, all right, who's the candidate, do we have anybody from Puyallup? And that's Meredith, so thank you, your reputation and your work precedes you, thank you very much. Okay, so, now, we are on to, let's see here, item F, resolution approving the placement of a countywide emergency medical services levy on the 2025 ballot. Brian Davis, the city administrator, that's why you're still standing there, I'm like, thank you, Brian.
I can sit down now?
You can leave, but, and then we also have our Deputy Chief Lisa Defenbach with the South King Fire and Rescue, as well as Kevin Crossen, and.
Michelle Plort.
Michelle, that's right, that's right, thank you. Okay, Brian?
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and I'm really just going to introduce them, but as the mayor mentioned, this is a resolution to, this is not for or against a levy, this is merely to, for the council to approve placing it on the ballot, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa Defenbach, the Deputy Chief from South King Fire, and Michelle Plort, who's the Division Director of Emergency Medical Services for King County.
What you said, all right, Michelle?
While they get the slides all set up, I'll introduce myself, again, Michelle Plort, I'm the AMAS Division Director in King County, and we have our esteemed chiefs here to help back me up for any operational questions that come up after I have a presentation. I want to thank you, I want to thank you for allowing me to come share the work that we've been doing this past year to ensure that our Medic One Emergency Medical Services is allowed to continue, you know, uninterrupted until the next levy period.
But we all thought it.
Council presentation?
Yes.
Whose birthday is it?
It was Juan's.
Well, happy birthday.
Because we want to... Oh, record of? Yeah. Okay.
I couldn't do this in my sleep, but you wouldn't be able to see it, so I wanted to make sure that you have the slide deck. So again, thank you for allowing me to come and share, I've got about a 15-minute slide deck, and if I talk even faster, I might be able to get through even quicker. So, as you know, the, or as you may not know, but the current levy expires at the end of this year, and that prompted our regional leaders to come together and say, "What are the programmatic needs in our financial plan that's going to help allow us to continue going forward?" There we go. So we ended up hosting about an eight-month process, where overseen by an EMS Advisory Task Force, to look at those programmatic needs and to come to consensus around what those needs are. What I really liked about this process is that it had representation from across the entire region. And I'll go through the details of who was represented there, but we were able to bring in community needs that are local, come to an agreement about what those priorities are, and then put a package together to bring to you, for you to review and support putting on the ballot. One of the steps, of course, is that we do require per state law, that in order to put an EMS levy on the ballot, that we need to have all the cities over 50,000, Federal Way included, and the King County Council to support putting it on the ballot. It's only 75%, it used to be 100%, but at last levy period, the legislature allowed us to drop that to 75%, or nine cities out of the 11. However, it's my intention to go to every, all 11 cities. We want regional support, and if there's any issues in the region, we want to be able to address those. So what is Medic One? Most people are familiar with that term, but I wanted to run quickly through what that means, so I can be specific about what you're supporting. Anytime you call 911 for a medical emergency, you're accessing the system I'm talking about. We have a great reputation, not only locally, nowhere nationally, but internationally, and we host folks coming from across the country, across the world, wondering what we do here to have such a successful system. And we go through a little bit of what makes it successful, and what am I talking about? So we serve over, you all, our system serves about 2.3 million people in the region, and we go on a call about every two minutes, that's pretty astounding. And in 2024, we went over, went to over 255,000 calls. And in 2023, and this is a real key measure that we use, is the survival for cardiac arrest. In this region, in King County specifically, it was 51%. This is the gold standard for measuring the quality of an EMS system. It's used, it's specifically measured, and we can compare ourselves to other places. And what's special about our community is that we are two to three times higher than other comparable places. And that's meaningful. Last year, there were 288 people who were clinically dead and were brought back to life, and they were able to leave the hospital because of our system. There's not a lot of places that can say that. So, I also wanted to share some local area, South King Fire is the jurisdiction that serves the city of Federal Way. And so for South King, they serve cities of Federal Way in Des Moines, approximately 165,000 people. And in 2024, comparing to the statistics I just shared with you, went on over 27,000 calls and had a response time of 6.57 minutes. In 2023, their cardiac arrest survival was 45%. It's not unusual to have variability, because the numbers get smaller when you go by year and by a sub-jurisdiction, but that is a phenomenal rate as well. So what happens when you call 91? Well, everyone in this area, in the region, can call 911, and they get connected to one of the four dispatch centers in the area. Down here, it's Valley Communications Center. And what's really important about the dispatch center is that they use standardized questioning and to figure out what kind of service you need with, based on what your answers to those questions are. What they're trying to decide is whether the EMTs are going to respond, such as South King Fire, or whether they also need a higher level of care and a paramedic unit needs to come out and help the EMTs. So, we call that a tiered system, where we reserve those paramedics, they're highly trained, they have over 2,500 hours of training up at Harborview under the School of Medicine at the University of Washington. We want to make sure that they only go on those high acuity calls. And so, that's what the job of the dispatch center is, and so if you ever call, you'll probably get a number of questions asking it, so that's what they're trying to determine. So why does our system work so well? Well, when they ask me this, which is not uncommon, I look at five different things. The first is that we are a regional system, there are many different partners, we have 23 currently, we also have hospitals and dispatch centers, both the paramedic layer and the fire department layer, and we all come together and say, "What are the things that we need to make sure that we maintain the kind of system that we have and the quality of the care that we provide?" We also have this tiered system, and we adjust those questions and we adjust our protocols based on science and medicine. We do studies constantly, we are looking at how we can improve our care and improve our response to patients in our community. The other thing that we look at is being sure that we're equity-driven. We want to make sure that every person in this region, no matter what their circumstances, what their background, what their lived experiences, is that they get that same high quality of care, and we're monitoring that regularly. As I mentioned, we have these innovative strategies, we try to do pilots, we try to garner what are some of the demands in the community and incorporate that into our planning. And then finally, we encourage and support an EMS levy, it's flexible. We've had a levy since 1979, which is the first time we came together as a region. And it's good for both good and bad times. During the housing crisis, our levy was able to fund what we needed to. During the boom of the 90s, we were also able to fund what we needed to. So, we really advocate for this entirety of the package, it's what we believe is why we're successful. So, before I get into some of the details, there are some things that we considered as a region, and one of them was population. Over the last number of decades, we've seen an incredible growth, and as you can see in the map here, it's variable. We've increased from 2010 to 2020, 18%, and that's how we got to the 2.3 million. You probably are experiencing that down in Federal Way, you could see on your own area of the map, that there's growth in that area. One of the things that we take into consideration, it's not a one-to-one correlation, where population growth and you get a call increase. And so I wanted to share this graph that shows, in the gray bars, the increase in population, very steady, but you can see with the blue line, that's our BLS, or Basic Life Support ENT Response Rates, or numbers, I should say, and then the red line is our paramedic response numbers. As you can see, in 2020, big drop. We had a pandemic, people didn't call as much, but immediately after, there was an interesting pattern that happened, is that the BLS calls immediately jumped, and they were jumping for a number of years. But luckily, I'm really happy to see that it's starting to plateau, because the pressure on our fire departments is pretty intense when we have a growth rate like that. The other thing that we always are looking at is our response times. And you can see here, I share this, because during that similar period of time, on the left, you can see the bars for the advanced life support or the paramedics, steady as she goes, right? Even with all of that growth and that impact in the COVID pandemic, everything was maintained, and on the right-hand side, you can see the fire department or basic life support. What that indicates to us is that there's resiliency and capacity within our system, and so we can manage those growth periods, but it doesn't mean that we need to forget and not try to impact our services, particularly for the BLS folks. We also are interested in diversity, so you can see on the left, that out of the growth in our area, it was predominantly in the Black Indigenous and People of Color population, specifically Asian and Hispanic. And on the right, you can see that there was an increase in the percentage of folks who were born outside the United States. So some of the things that we're thinking about is language and access to our services, and making sure that we have equity across those access points. And then you can see the impact, again, I love graphics and maps, that shows a visualization of some of the dynamics that are happening, and you can see in the county that there is a big variety of who speaks English at home or another language. And again, that is variable, and you can see in Federal Way, again, that you have some impacts to those statistics. So I'm going to get into the, what we needed to do to create a strategic plan, we have one for this levy period, and it talks about how we distribute the funds, what are the programs that we want to support, we needed to do that for the next levy period. So we needed to identify what our needs are. We needed to identify what's the financial plan that's going to support those programmatic needs. We also needed to make sure that we have sufficient reserves. So a long time ago, we didn't have reserves, we had to be pretty sure that we are identifying the costs accurately. When we introduced reserves in, that gave us a little bit of breathing room, but we still need to make sure that we have sufficient amounts, and I'll go into what some of the thinking is when we identify those amounts. And then finally, the task force was, needed to find a levy length, a levy rate, and then know which ballot to put it on. So those were those requirements for them. Before we go into the next levy period, I want to talk about where we are now. So we're in a six-year levy, again, 2020 to 2025. We had a starting rate of 26.5 cents per thousand dollars assessed value. That was expected to generate a 1.1 billion amount of dollars for over a six-year period. One, a thing of interest is that that includes Seattle and King County. There is a split since 1979, that Seattle will get all the funds that they raised in the city of Seattle, and outside the city of Seattle, we would have formulas for how we dole out the money to the fire departments and our contractees. Outside the city of Seattle and the county, it was expected to raise 664 million for the other, for us to distribute out to our partners. Of note, the advanced life support or the paramedic programs, this is their only source of funding. So we want to make sure that they have sufficient numbers, you'll see going forward that they are the priority of the levy. Basic life support gets a contribution from the levy, it's not expected to support their entire budget, they have access to other funding sources, so, but we do value the BLS folks as a very integral part of our system, i.e. our regional partners that I mentioned. And then also, regional services, strategic initiatives, and reserves are all, this is the only source that we have, and so I'll go through what the specifics look like. The cost to the homeowner, and I recognize, I went to one council and they said, "Do we only collect homeowner property taxes?" And I said, "No, this is just a way to look at what it costs a homeowner, is an example of what someone in the community might pay." And it was $159 in 2020, based on a $600,000 medium home. And so I just want to put that number in your head, because we'll flash forward to see what it looks like, what we're projecting in the next levy period. We do collect all the property taxes that we're allowed to collect, so just don't be worried about that. So, I mentioned an EMS Advisory Task Force, our mayor, Farrell, was a representative of the city of Federal Way, so thank you for serving. There was a governing body of 20 people, did include all 50,000, or 11 cities over 50,000. Sound Cities Association had three spots, the fire commissioners also had three, and the King County Council had two seats there. And it was chaired by the King County Executive. There were four subcommittees, and this is where an opportunity for the fire departments and any other interested parties to come and figure out and get some subject matter expertise in these subcommittees, and there were four of them. There was the advanced life support or the paramedic program, the BLS or the fire departments, regional services, and then the finance, and I'll run through what the recommendations for each of those subcommittees were. Again, I wanted to highlight that when we're talking about programmatic aspects, that's for outside the city of Seattle, but when we're talking about the funds, I'll specify when we're talking about outside Seattle or when we're talking about the whole funding package. So I'm going to run through these quickly. It does not include every recommendation, there were some technical recommendations, but these are the main ones that are germane for a highlight. Continue using the ALS allocation, that's how we dole out the money to the different paramedic programs. With an inflator, that is at CPIW plus 1%. They also recommended putting a placeholder, so we want to make sure that we have sufficient paramedic services, and so we monitor that on an annual basis to see if there's any stresses in the systems. And once we see a stress in our medic units, then we will start to consider, it's not a given, start to consider whether we need to add services, and there's a whole procedure for that. We also wanted to make sure that there was sufficient reserves for the paramedic program. As I mentioned before, it's the only source of funding that they have, we want to make sure that they have everything that they need. For the BLS Subcommittee, they wanted to increase, because of the things I was talking about, increased calls, increased stresses, increased duties, that we wanted to increase their baseline allocation. So we added 5 million for the first year, and it would increase at CPI after that. It was to be allocated in two parts, one is to just go 3 million going into the basic allocation, but there's a program called Mobile Integrated Health, it was introduced into the levy, a couple levy periods ago, and we were testing it. This is the first year that we distributed funds for mobile integrated health specifically across to every fire department in the county to see if they would need it and what they would do with those funds. And because it was such a popular program, people wanted to add money to it, so they suggested a $2 million add. Just for your own understanding, mobile integrated health allows the fire departments to get back in service, and either with social workers or nurses or some other kind of combination, they can go follow up with our folks in the community who need to get connected into local area services. They might not need necessarily 911, but they need to get follow up in some more long-term care, and so it's been a really popular program, particularly by the fire departments, but also in the community. They also wanted to inflate by CPIW plus 1%. They also wanted to do an adjustment of how we distribute those funds to the fire departments. It used to be in a 50/50 based on call volumes, another 50% based on AV that's contributed to the EMS levy. But for reasons of equity and understanding that service is one of the things that represents sometimes inequities in the community, they wanted to split it to a 60/40. So equity was really a mechanism for integrating into our thinking and how we spend our money. And then lastly, they wanted to support the mental wellness and the equity and inclusion efforts proposed by the King County Fire Chiefs Association. There are two subcommittees there that focus on those two areas. As you know, mental wellness, particularly through COVID, has been greatly impacting our first responders, and we wanted to make sure that we had techniques and tools to make sure that our first responders have everything that they need to be able to serve the community. The final programmatic Subcommittee is the Regional Services and Initiatives. They also supported continuing the programs that are essential, including supporting our medical program directors, supporting our EMT training, and supporting our data collection, so that we have all the tools that we need to measure what's happening out in our service areas. They also wanted to enhance a couple areas. We've been having really intense staffing issues with retirements and people moving on to other careers, and we wanted to make sure that we had sufficient funding for ramping up all of the hiring that's going to likely continue for a number of years. The other thing is, is that we wanted to renew our telephone referral program. These are for calls that are very low acuity, and they pass them off to a nurse line and see if we can manage it on the phone. And so that they really were intent on supporting this kind of program to help, again, miss- again, mitigate the impacts on the fire departments responding. And the last thing that we had, we added this, oh gosh, I think about four levy periods ago, this idea where we love to be innovative. We want to try things out. We have an idea, but we don't necessarily know what it's going to look like or have the details. And what, a couple of those are community-based partnerships where we go out into the community and work with organizations that represent historically marginalized groups and say, what do you need? What do you need vis a vis the relationship with EMS? Is it about education? Is it about when to call? Is it about definitions or, or what you need to do to have a better, have the best relationship and bring, again, that high-quality care? The other thing is about prime. We needed to upgrade some of our systems and so we had a, a project related to improving our, the way that we collect data and integrate with other systems. And now we have a new initiative, what's called the Emergency Medical Dispatch, which is to bring technical improvements to those comm centers so that they can process those calls as quickly as possible. So what does all this cost? I put the pie chart in here because it gives you a visual of where the money is going. So again, the gray portion of the pie is, again, that advanced life support. It is the majority and it should be the priority of our, of our funds. Second to that is our basic life support, then regional services and initiatives. The dollar amounts that were expected, and again, this is based on an August 2024 predictions of what our AVs and our inflations are going to be. And so we expect to raise, or expect to spend $919 million during a six-year period. And again, this is outside the city of Seattle. So what portion is going to go to South King Fire? Well, in 2025, they got for their BLS fund, $2.95 million, of which 493K was for their MIH program. What's estimated in the first year of the levy is 3.56 million. So you can see that increase. And then again, also an increase to the mobile integrated health program, up to 694,000. Then our fourth subcommittee was taking all of these program recommendations, the costing for that, and was, their task was to understand what the risk was for those projections and then what should we have our reserve rates at to mitigate those risks. And they wanted us to do a risk analysis. And so some of the drivers for revenue side is what's that beginning assessed value? What is our new construction levels? That's part of our formula for what money we can get. What's the split between Seattle and King County based on those, the AV? And then a key, a key component is what are the amounts of reserves that we are able to carry for of unused funds in this levy period to help bring down the rate? On the expenditure side, the number of units that we need, the cost escalators or those inflators that I mentioned, are we adding any new services? And then finally, what are those levels of contingencies and reserves that we've anticipated? Not clicking. See if I can trick it. Wants me to write. Oh, I was just clicking all over the place. Thank you. Sorry about that. Moving right along. There we go. So this is a, this is a little bit of a complicated graph, but I, hopefully I'll explain it. So the Office of Economic and Financial Analysis at King County does all of our economic projections. They selected the AV, new construction, the ratio of King County to Seattle, and inflation is the primary ones that they wanted to do analysis on. Individually, they, they characterize what would be the least impact and the greatest impact on those risks for each of them independently. That's what those graphs in the different colors are. But what I'm interested in is accumulatively. So cumulatively, the range is 3.18 million at the lowest side and then the 76.9 on the highest side. So hold that thought in your mind if you can remember. It's also in my slide deck. But I'm going to get to this slide and I'm not going to go in the order like most people do, but because I have a, I'd like to, to tell a better story. And the story is if you look at the 64.4 million, that's the carry for, that we're expecting to be able to pull from this levy period of unspent reserves. And then addition, we have, expected to have about 17 million mostly in interest. And then at a 25 cent levy rate, we expect that to raise about 1.47 billion dollars over that six-year. And this financial plan is for the entire, this includes Seattle and the King County. So for a total of 1.5 billion plus, 1.55 billion in, in expenditure or in revenues. Now we go to the expenditure side. All of those, including Seattle, we expect to have about 1.4 billion in expenditures and then those reserves that I was talking about, we are, we put those at 6 point, 67.7 million for that six-year period. And if you look at the delta between those dollar amounts of expenditures and revenues, there's a supplemental reserve of 47 million. And if you look at that, you can see that it fits sort of right in the middle of the risk analysis range that I, I mentioned. And so this is what the financial task force recommended moving forward. This slide shares what the portion of the city of Seattle will get. And then the last slide, not last slide, but last slide around the recommendations, the financial subcommittee recommended moving forward at a 25 cent levy rate, raising a little bit over 1.5 billion for a six-year span and putting that on the November ballot. So support those programmatic, this is the task force supporting the programmatic recommendations, 25 cents. In this case, as I mentioned, it's 212 estimated on an $850,000 home, which is what we expect is an average. They recommended a six-year period from 26 to 31 and they also supported putting up on the November ballot. One of the things, and this is, was in my slide deck, but it's not in yours, but because I had to use mine, this is a slide, and I was going to send it to you and you don't have it in your packet because this is a little bit late-breaking. I presented this to the King County Council. We have now some March updates of OIFA. And you can see in here the comparison between the numbers that I just shared with you in August 24. We have seen a reduction in the property taxes coming forward during that levy period and it's gone down about 46 million dollars, so 40, almost 47. However, the, it's countered by the fact that we believe that we now are able to carry over, over $81 million out of our current levy period. So the net difference is about $26.6 million for our supplemental reserves. However, the King County, particularly the office of the budget, the budget office believes that we still can manage our risks with a reduction to a 20, $20 million supplemental reserve. So I will get that slide deck out to you, or not the slide deck, but this slide for you. So if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to entertain any questions. All right.
Counselor Doby?
The question I have is maybe a misunderstood. It looked like it was 600 million and it's going up to 969 million. So why did the cost go not double, but so high? What's, is it salaries, equipment, more services? I mean, that's a huge gap in six years.
Exactly. And happy to say that 80% of that increase is inflation.
80% is inflation?
80%, yes. 80% is inflation. It's expected to be about 3% per year. And so the rest of it is we are increasing slightly the support to the ALS or the paramedic program. As I mentioned, what's new is the BLS folks got increases to their allocation of, starting at 5 million. And then there's also a new initiative, the one that supports the dispatch centers. I definitely have a slide deck that can show what those look like, but yeah, it's inflation.
So, and my, I guess my follow-up question, and so South King County is getting, what was it, less than 5 million out of, what was, I mean, you had a number, 3 to 5 million in there and you got 969 million. How much money is actually coming to South King County out of this levy?
That was just for the numbers that I shared. That was just the one year, 2026.
Okay, so for six years, they're going to get 32 million, something like that?
It's based on, yeah, I mean, if you averaged it out, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I was just, it seemed like such a big number and such a small amount. So I was wondering why we were getting short change down here.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, did you have something quick to add?
Just question and so, or statement, so it's 80, on an $850,000 home average, probably for the entire King County, it's about an $18 increase per month? Because it's 212.
On average, yeah. Actually, I have the statistics for what that would look like in Federal Way. If I can find it in my slide deck. I think it was, I think it was about $94 based on a $300,000 home.
No, we don't have 300. We have double that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Honda, then Counselor McDaniel.
Thank you. Does Pierce County go through the same process for their medic one?
I'm sorry, can you?
Does Pierce County go through the same process for their medic one program?
I do not know.
Okay.
I, I do know that in King County, we're one of the few that operates at a countywide level. I believe in Pierce County, they have local jurisdictions. They don't have an entire county that comes together.
So would Pierce County come into South King County if we needed services?
Yes. So they have mutual aid agreements between the board, yeah. And they even have mutual aid between jurisdictions. So if, for example, South King is out of resources, other jurisdictions will come in to cover. And likewise, the opposite. They'll go, South King will go into other jurisdictions if, for example, Puget Sound is out of resources for a moment.
So is the medic one vehicle located at the fire station down by Warehouser?
I've watched it many times as it's trying to weave through traffic since that's an extremely busy road and it's only going to get busier with light rail coming in. Is that a good place to locate it to provide the services that we need or, yes?
You want to, yeah. So, so we do an analysis, as I mentioned, every year, looking at where there's stresses in the system. And we look at several, several different things. We look at response times, we look at call volumes, and we have what we would call markers for what's within range. And if you go outside the range, for example, we look at units between about 25,000 or 2,500 calls is usually what we're looking at. If they go over, we start wondering if there's stresses. We also look at, for example, the skills that the paramedics are exposed to during that period because you don't want to add too many. So then they get far fewer exposures to the difficult calls. We want to keep their skills at a high level. So we monitor that every year and make sure that they're in the right place. If we start seeing that things are going a little haywire in terms of long response times or sometimes issues with traffic, we will look at other options. And so the chief of King County Medic One, who oversees the paramedic program down here, is always looking at what their performance. And if there's stresses on it, then we start looking at, do we relocate? Because that's the least expensive thing to do. Adding a unit is very expensive and you can't take it out. You got to make sure you're doing the right thing in the right place at the right time. So we take some time to, to do that analysis.
And lastly, thank you for being here. Thank you chiefs for being here and sending through our meeting. We appreciate it.
Counselor McDaniel.
Yeah, thanks for coming. I got quite a few questions. First time I've looked at something like this. So my first one is going to start with the 911 to give it a better understanding. I know we have ValleyCom for 911 that we pay for. When someone calls ValleyCom and they get directed to medical or fire, South King Fire, who covers the ValleyCom's cost for that? Is that part of your guys' expenses?
No, the jurisdiction pays for it.
So when we see our monthly bills for ValleyCom, that includes your guys' services?
Our, you mean our jurisdiction?
Well, no.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, yes, you're correct. You see the police side of it because you have a city police department. South King Fire also pays a call based on a call. We pay the same rate the city does. Obviously, police has a lot more calls than fire does. So we don't pay nearly the same amount, but yes, we all pay by the, the incident.
So when someone calls in, they actually have a split out and goes into a, okay.
Yes.
That was an interesting one. Thanks for that one. The next one I had is trying to understand a little bit more about the, what the difference between the BLS and ALS, the basic life support and advanced life support. There was, all I could see real quick through the slides was the time differences form. And then you also mentioned that BLS is not primarily supported by this levy, but ALS is. What would be the service differences between BLS and ALS?
So BLS services go to all calls, except for the ones that we send over to the, to the telephone referral program. Paramedics only go to the life-threatening ones.
So paramedics would be the ALS?
ALS, correct.
Okay.
I use them interchangeably, so I apologize.
No problem.
ALS is, is also paramedics. BLS is the EMT responses, the fire department base.
What does the FF stand for?
Firefighter.
Okay, thank you. So that makes sense on that one. My next one's going to be, I was trying to understand and I believe Counselor Doby mentioned it. If I look at the charts here, it shows a pie chart that has nine, 919 million dollars in KCMS funds. And then the one down below, if I go down, you have expenses above revenues, but the expenses is the 1.5 billion. Are those the two that we're talking about being comparables over the different times?
No, so the 919 million is what is expected for those programmatic things outside the Sea, the city of Seattle. In that chart, that has the 1.55 billion in expenditures, that now includes the city of Seattle and it also includes reserves.
Reserves.
Yeah. And so that pie chart does not include the reserves.
Gotcha. And the reserves you guys are talking about is 67 million?
Correct.
And then you also have a 74 million estimated additional fund sitting there?
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, why would you guys need to sit on an additional 74 million if you have the 67?
But that is a, a good question. So the programmatic ones that are up above, the 67.7, those go to mostly the ALS program.
But aren't they reserves?
Those include the additional unit. They, you know, if we need to add a unit, it's included in there. If they have call volumes that are outside what they're able to manage, that's in there. In addition, there is a requirement by King County to have what's called a 90-day rainy day fund. And so that, most of that 67 million is for?
Pro-matic.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you know what the, because it shows reserves, so my mind is just reserved, but then I see you have parentheses around it.
Yeah.
Do you know what the breakout of that 67 is, this programmatic versus rainy day?
Not off the top of my head, but I have a slide for it and I can include that, send that to you.
Awesome, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
And then 80% increase, was his numbers pretty accurate for the difference in the expenses then?
Yes, 81% for inflation. Is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get my mind around 81% for inflation. I just, and does that include the increased services though?
So the, if, if you saw some of those recommendations, they each included one CPIW plus 1% to keep up with costs. And so if you add those each year cumulatively to each other, it adds up to quite a bit of money. And I can share, especially if that shows you exactly where that, what, what that cost is, yeah.
Oh, I'd like that because 80 is ju, I'd love to see how 81.
Yeah, how that, how we got to 81.
Yeah, it's a huge number in my mind. Let me see if I have anything else on here. I think you answered most of those. And then my, my other question, okay, you, you mentioned cardiac as your, kind of like the KPI or key performance. Why is cardiac, is that like the number one call you guys get? Or is it just the easiest one to measure against for life?
For paramedic program, yes.
It is, okay.
The way I like to describe it is, number one, it's something that is very easy to identify. Your, your heart is not beating, you're not breathing, there's no gray area in that.
Yeah.
Second.
Black and white.
Yeah, and, yeah, exactly. And so when you have a case like that and you want to, to resuscitate them, it takes an incredible amount of resources. It takes, you know, you'll, you'll see that you'll have lots of trucks on, on scene, you'll have both paramedics there, often multiple trucks, because you need so many hands to do all the different things that are needed. And it really requires you to be really choreographed around whose role is, you know, who's doing what and how, and making sure that each thing that you do is correct to the best degree possible. And so no other call is really like a cardiac arrest and it's easily measurable. Are they alive? Do they have all their, you know, things intact? And so it's easy to say they left the hospital and they can do all of their daily activities. So that's a part of why it's such a good. So that's a part of why it's such a good measure, that when you go to Texas or, you know, Michigan, they can measure it the very same way that we measure it here, and have good comparables. If you have things like motor vehicle crashes, or other kinds of, you know, a stroke, everyone is so different, uh, that it's get, hard to get those measures, uh, to be comparable. And so that's why it's the old standard for EMS.
So the, so put it as cardiac arrest, and then time to respond to, like, the two apple-to-apple comparables across the board?
Yeah.
Okay. The next set of questions I have are actually more about just procedural policies, and this is my first levy and ballot I'm looking at, I'm going to ask some questions to the city. I know as it comes across as a resolution, it goes as a levy on the ballot. What is the usual process for levies and ballot measurements? And then what's the price associated to? Because I know there's a difference on pricing depending on what, uh, what ballot we stick it on and stuff.
Ken?
I know the answer to the first part of the question, I don't know the answer to the pricing question. Um, so for this type of a levy, it needs to be a resolution, um, that approves placement of it on the ballot, that's the mechanism for doing so. I don't know what the price difference is, um, to, to your second, second question there.
Okay, so, uh, anything goes on the ballot comes through as a resolution? And the reason I'm asking is because last time we had a resolution, it didn't go through a commission, I, I heard about it, so I'm making sure I check my, my boxes on this one.
There, not everything that is on the ballot needs to be approved through a resolution. This is, this particular action needs to have a resolution for it to be placed on the ballot.
Okay. And would these normally go through parks, or they go straight to council?
The resolution.
Yeah.
Um, it, it could be done either way. I'm not, did this one skip committee? That's a question. So it can skip committee, um, that's always an option at the, at the option of the committee chair. But that's more of an internal, um, city policy, like, we could do it either way, is the answer.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, um, Lisa, great job. Um, I don't see any other council questions. Uh, a very, very good, uh, job. Thank you, chiefs, for being here. Now, um, Council President Cochran, do you have a motion?
Thank you, mayor, I move approval of the proposed resolution.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously, thank you very much, and once again, thank you very much, and good luck. Thank you. Okay, um, now, we are on to item G, uh, program year 2025 to 2029, Community Development Block Grant CDBG Consolidated Plan. We'll have Kim Beckrack, our Human Services Coordinator, give a staff presentation. Welcome, Kim.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council president, city council. Would hate for anyone to miss my three slides. All right, this evening that I'm presenting to you are 2025 through 2029 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Consolidated Plan. Uh, you may remember, you've seen this presentation a couple times before. This essentially is the final approval of the consolidated plan. Uh, there were no public comments on the plan, uh, so it has not changed since you've seen it last. So our policy question here this evening, should the city council approve the 2025-2029 Community Develop Block Grant CDBG Consolidated Plan? Uh, and this is just a quick reminder of, uh, what the funding looks like for the CD, for our CDBG annual allocation. Uh, this is our 2025 anticipated funding. We have not yet gotten our, um, funding letter from HUD, uh, but this is what we got in 2024, um, and generally, it has looked similar from year to year. Uh, so what you'll see on our annual action plan is, uh, the breakup there between public service, planning administration, and SERF. Uh, SERF stands for Community Economic and Revitalization Funding. Uh, that's generally, uh, capital projects and then some economic projects. And are there any questions?
Counselor, are there any questions for Kim? All right, uh, Kim, thank you, um, stay close. Uh, Councilmember Walsh, do you have a motion?
I move approval of the proposed 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025 Action Plan.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously, I'm going to say thank you, Kim. All right, uh, now, uh, we are on to item H, Abatement of 31531, Fourth Avenue South. Staff presentation by Curtis Richards, our code compliance, one of our code compliance officer.
Trying to get my notes up.
Need help sharing?
Yeah, I'm trying to get the notes and sharing, so it's.
No. They've got to share with the folks online.
Yeah.
All right, no notes, okay.
All right, Curtis, the floor is yours.
All right. Good eve, good evening, council members, and mayor, and all the, and all others present. My name is Curtis Richards, I'm a code compliance officer here for the City of Federal Way. Uh, I'm here to request approval to execute a goods and service agreement for the asbestos abatement of 31531, Fourth Avenue South, Federal Way, Washington. The policy question is, should the city council authorize execution of a goods and services agreement for asbestos abatement at the property located at 31531, Fourth Avenue South, Federal Way, Washington? Uh, Federal Way Revised Code 115080 authorizes this action. Uh, abatement by city, the city may perform the abatement required upon non-compliance with the terms of an unappealed notice in order, a voluntary correction agreement, or a final order of the hearing examiner. The city may utilize city employees or private contractor under city direction to accomplish the abatement. The city, its employees, and agents using lawful means are expressly authorized to enter upon the property of the violator for such purposes. Two, recovery of costs. The city shall bill.
Curtis, is there another slide?
Uh, this was just the background, I have on this under my notes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just to say that the city's authorized to do it and recover its costs by.
Okay, all right.
Abating the violation. Sorry, I lost my spot in the notes. The term incidental expenses shall include but not be limited to personnel costs, both direct and indirect, including attorney's fees incurred by the city, costs incurred in the documentation of the violation, the actual expenses and costs to the city in the preparation of notices, specifications and contracts, and in inspecting the work, and any cost required of printing and mailing. The mayor, uh, or designee of the hearing examiner may, in his or her discretion, waive in whole or part the assessment of any costs of abatement upon, uh, showing that abatement has occurred or is no longer necessary, or that the costs would cause a significant financial hardship for the responsible party. The city may authorize the use of collection agencies to recover costs. Uh, the city attorney is authorized to collect the costs by use of appropriate legal remedies. This is the current condition of the property. Uh, this shows the property in 2019, when the tree, uh, collapsed onto the roof, took out a portion of it, and it's been vacant ever since. And these are the asbestos results for the property, uh, just shows that there is two different types of asbestos, uh, they're friable, non-friable, and the different locations and percents of it. All right, now we're going to get into a little bit of the background on this and why it's, uh, necessary. Uh, this property has a history of code violations occurring over the last three owners in seven years. We issued a notice of emergency summary abatement on March 10th, 2025. By doing that, we then had, or an asbestos survey, uh, that was required for demolition permit, was completed on the 10th as well. Uh, we secured the property with a fence on the 13th of March. On the 14th of March, the asbestos survey came back positive for the asbestos I showed you on that previous slide. And due to that, we had, we issued an expedited informal request for proposals for the abatement. And then the big issue is due to the asbestos on the property, and the owner's starting the demolition before they, um, were supposed to and getting the proper permitting, that triggered the Regulation 3404(c) exemption, which is an abatement in place protocol that the Puget Sound Cleaner Agency has. It has very stringent notification and monitoring requirements. While following up on this, we also issued a notice of violation order to correct on the 20th of March, 2024. And while we're working through all that, we were able to select a contractor from the four bids we did receive for the abatement on the 15th of April. And as of today, I did get an update on the property. I was informed that by the property owner's contractor that they had approval from Puget Sound Cleaner Agency, and were planning on starting the abatement on the 12th of this month. But there has been no demolition permit issued by the city yet. The demolition permit is an over-the-counter permit through the permit center, but it's still a requirement before they can start any demolition on the property. Here are the four bids we received for the abatement. Uh, we received one from Leyland Construction for forty-four thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. We received another from Woodland Industries for forty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, we received one from Dixon Demolition and Abatement for thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. And we also received a bid from Conway Abatement and Demolition for forty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. So the cost breakdown on this was Dixon was bidding, or estimating the twenty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars for the demolition and environmental remediation of the asbestos-impacted mobile home. Uh, there was two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars for sales tax, so the total for the abatement from Dixon was thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh, this brings us to the options to consider, which is to approve the proposed agreement, or to do not approve the agreement and provide direction to the staff.
Okay, um, Councilor O'Dovey.
Could you go back? I thought I heard you say that the property owner is planning on doing their own demolition and cleanup on May 12th?
That is what I was informed of as of today.
So why are we having this discussion if they're going to do it themselves? Is there something I'm missing?
Yeah, we don't know if they're actually going to follow through. When we first made contact, contacted the property owner, uh, they started the demolition without any permitting. So then they, that day, they stopped the work, then they came into the permit center with me, and they said they'd get the demolition permit and do everything. That was back in November of last year, and they have not done anything.
Right, but I guess November last year, I mean, we're, today's the sixth, right? And they're talking six days, I mean, what am I missing?
Sounds like we were just contacted today. How did that contact occur?
Uh, I received a voicemail from their contractor, then I called the property owner myself to confirm what was going on.
After this had already been, uh, scheduled?
Correct, this is after, we've already been on the council. And with the property owner's, uh, pre, history of not actually doing the work, we want to make sure we move forward and have everything ready to go, in case he does not.
Uh, Councilmember O'Dovey, were you finished?
Well, I guess my question is, so we're going to give the opportunity to the owner of the property to take care of this themselves, and not send somebody out before the 12th for, I mean, I'd be a little unhappy if somebody, if I was going to do it, and I'm a property owner, and, you know, maybe I haven't been following the rules, but I'm going to do it on the 12th, and we come in and say we're doing it now, and charge him.
The idea here, council member, I'll, I'll just jump in.
Please.
The idea here is to get council authorization to sign this goods and services agreement to do the abatement, but we will only actually sign it if they don't follow through, i.e. the property owner doesn't follow through with doing the abatement on the date that they've stated.
And so, if we were to, if they don't do it, we have to do it, and we have to go get the permits, just like they would have to get the permits, and, um, and then we would bill them the thirty-one thousand, or put a lien on the property?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So we're, if we pass this, we're passing it not to do it now, it'd be some time after the 12th, I don't know how long it takes to do this, and, but, is that what we're going to be doing?
Right, we would only do this if they don't fall through on this, and we just found that by voicemail today.
Yeah, I get that, that's new, breaking news. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilor Honda.
Thank you. Is this only structure on this property?
Correct, it is.
And, so I, I see that the building is wide open. Is asbestos, um, has it been exposed, and is it able to be in the air? Or is it still underneath the floors and the, whatever, in the kitchen and stuff?
If I go back that slide, I can tell you exactly where each, um, section was taken, or the sample was taken from. So there was asbestos in the silver paint on the roofing material. Let me go back to a picture. So if you look at the roof on this picture, you have to see how it's kind of silver in a lot of the areas, that's the asbestos-containing, uh, paint on there.
So is that able, is that in the area in the atmosphere there, flying around? Are the neighbors exposed to it?
There is, it, when it's disturbed, yes, there is that risk.
So it hasn't been disturbed?
Um, well, yes, it has been disturbed, as we can, uh, that is part of the reason why we did, the city did go and fence it under the emergency memo, we started this whole process.
Why didn't we tarp it, to keep, try to contain the asbestos?
I honestly don't have an answer for that, it just wasn't considered. The main, the main concern was trying to secure the property right away as quickly as we could, because it is on a walking path to one of the schools, so we don't want any children getting into a half-collapsed building.
Which is a, a good thing. So the permit hasn't been given yet, it, can it be, can a permit be, be issued immediately when they come in to get it?
Uh, yes, as long as they have all their sign-offs from, like, Lake Haven, Puget Sound Energy, and everybody else, it's an over-the-counter permit.
And that's the same for us, too?
Correct.
And do we have those sign-offs?
We will, as soon as we're moving forward, unless we have.
Moving forward from tonight?
Uh, yes, as soon as we have approval to move forward, we can get those.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember McDaniel?
They got most of the questions, I got a couple last ones. So, um, have they pulled any permits whatsoever for whatever design, building, or anything they're planning on doing?
There has been no permits for any construction.
So we have no clue what's the thinking they're going to do with that property at the moment?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, um, if we were to go through with this, and you guys had to get permits, what is the soonest that is realistically you guys would go in there anyways?
Um, well, there's a ten bit, ten-day wait for Puget Sound Cleaner Agency, and that would be looking at the contractor's scheduling, so realistically, it'd be a couple weeks, and we'd be moving on it.
Oh, so it's going to be plenty time after the 12th?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that's making, thank you.
Okay, council, oh, Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, one last thing, if we do, if we do do it, if they don't, the property owner doesn't do it, we do it and end up placing a lien on the property. With that lien, if it's a few years before the property sells, and, I mean, and we get our money back, do we receive interest on that, or is it just the, whatever the, the, you know, the, what was it, the thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six stays that same thing?
I don't believe we receive interest on it, because it becomes part of the assessment lien that, that comes out of the taxes each year, so it doesn't incur interest each year that it sits there on the tax rolls.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. I have one more question, mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember O'Dovey.
It's a big difference between the top and the low bid. Why is that? I mean, normally, we get a bid like that, we wouldn't take it, because it probably's not going to perform when we're doing roads and things like that. What's the, what's, what's your opinion on why they're so different?
A big reason, actually, for the cost disparity was the Dixon has their own, uh, heavy equipment and trucks, and there being not enough adequate water supply on site, they have to actually truck in their water, so they have some significant cost saving by having the equipment.
And then, the picture, if this gets abated, what, will we just have a foundation there, basically?
Uh, yeah, they're pretty much scraping everything.
They scraping the foundation, too?
Um, that, with being a mobile home, it's not set on a full foundation.
Is that on, is that a mobile home on blocks?
Yeah, it's just has a little bit of cladding around it, so they're going to go in and scrape everything off of it.
They're going to scrape the whole thing?
Yes.
And how big is that lot? And how big is that lot?
30 feet wide by, I can't remember the depth, it's a very odd-shaped lot.
Get a lot of little houses on it, right, Keith?
Okay, Councilmember Tran, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move approval of the proposed agreement.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think that the motion needs to say, nothing happens until after the 12th, you know, if the customer comes in and does their own permit.
Okay, would you, Councilmember Tran, would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And so, sorry for clarification, that would be a motion to authorizing execution of the goods and services agreement after that date.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe you make it the 13th in case they have a flat tire coming in or something.
Okay.
Just like he said.
Got it, okay. Anna, did you get that? Okay, okay. Is there any other discussion? It's been a motion, a second, any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, and passes unanimously. Alright, now we're on to item nine. We are on to second reading and enactment, item A, Council Bill 903, Ordinance Accessory Dwelling Unit Code Amendment. Would Deputy City Clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 903, Ordinance Accessory Dwelling Unit Code Amendment, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to accessory dwelling units, amending Federal Way Revised Code 1991-060, 1992-060, 19195-180, 19200-100, 19200-180, 19205-010, 19205-020, 19205-040, and 19250-170.
Alright, Councilmember W, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move to approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Item B, Council Bill 904, Ordinance Hyper Fiber of Washington LLC Franchise. Would Deputy City Clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 904, Ordinance Hyper Fiber of Washington LLC Franchise, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, granting Hyper Fiber of Washington LLC a non-exclusive franchise to occupy rights of way of the City of Federal Way, Washington, within the specified franchise area of the purposes of constructing, maintaining, operating, replacing, and repairing a telecommunications network within and through the City of Federal Way.
Councilmember W., do you have a motion?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Alright, thank you, council. We are now on to council reports, first meeting of the month. We'll start with position number one, Councilmember Sephardos.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have nothing to report.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember McDaniel?
I was the only one to report, I'm looking forward to this beautiful summer and some hanging outside and maybe the farmer's market. I hope everybody has a good week.
There you go. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So Saturday, I was fairly busy, but one of the funnest parts of the day was being at the concession stand at Federal Way High School, where the Conus Club runs the concession stand, and it was elementary track. So if you ever have the time, and there's another elementary track program, which I think there's one more coming up this spring, it is so fun to be there and to watch the kids. I think they, you know, they do want to even and then come up and eat. We did, we did sell a lot of popcorn and hot dogs that day, and all the money is reinvested into the kids here in Federal Way, so that's pretty awesome. This month is Pacific Islander, Hawaiian, and Asian American Month, and I would encourage you to support businesses run by those communities and any events that they have in the community. Yesterday, May 5th, is Children's Day in Japan, or it used to be Boys' Day, and to signify that, a family would have carp, flying carp, they're beautiful cloth fish that you fly to signify that you have boys in your home. Several, many years ago, they changed it to Children's Day, and it's celebrated throughout the world, actually, along with Sino de Mayo on the same day. But we had the opportunity about two weeks ago to go to Wesley Gardens in Des Moines and watch a two-hour movie on the internment camps that happened during World War II. And what was heartbreaking for me was, in the audience, were about six senior citizens who were children and who were in internment camps, including my mother-in-law. And heartbreaking to watch the movie and to know that, to know, my mother-in-law was 10, that she had to live through that and suffer the things that they suffered. But anyway, I would encourage you to support any activities or events that the community puts on in King County, and there will be several, I'm sure. I had the opportunity to go to El Centro de Raza on Park Cleanup Day, which was April 26, and they are part of a program that Comcast supports. And so Comcast has this program called Rise, and I'm gonna read what it is because it is an amazing opportunity for people in King County. A business has the opportunity to receive a grant through Comcast Rise, which is providing 100 local small businesses with comprehensive packages that include a tech makeover, creative production, a media schedule, $5,000 monetary grant, and business consultation services. Apply from May 1st through May 31st, and you can go to Comcast and apply, or it could send you the information. But I know that El Centro de Raza will benefit from this, as did the Boys and Girls Club in Tacoma that I had the opportunity to go through a couple of years ago with National League of Cities, and it's an amazing program that brings a lot of services to the area. So other than that, looking forward to the farmer's market, and Mother's Day is this weekend, so honor your mothers, if you're lucky enough to still have one. Thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things that I wanna share. You wanna hear the funny things first, or the serious things first? Okay, I'll do the funny things first. No, okay. So we just came back from a six-week trip, and we were on a cruise ship going from Bali to Australia, and on the way, we stopped by a couple of places in Indonesia, and then, of course, Australia. One of the places that we stopped by was the Komodo Islands.
Oh, the dragons.
To see the, well, at first, we did not know the dragon was there, but we wanna see the pink beach, which is very interesting color. But then, when we talked to a couple of people on the cruise ship, people were saying that, no, 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 we wanna go there to see the dragon, because this entire trip, 14 days on sea, we wanna see those dragon. So we talked, you know, we talked about it, and my wife said, okay, let's just go with the group. We did not know those dragon is the most poisonous thing. And we cannot get off the ship without the renter. So we basically made the arrangement at the very last minute, so we went. Now, the moral of the story is, do your research before you do anything, and not just to go along with anybody. But we did see the dragon. It's really different in their natural habitat. You cannot see those dragon anywhere else in the world, maybe except in the field zoo, but that is the only place that you can see them. So we did that.
Do you have pictures?
I'm sorry?
Do you have pictures?
I do, I do. I'll share that with you. And then on our last stop was the Cook Islands. And I wanna share this because I want EJ and Keith hear this, some fun facts about that particular island. There is no traffic lights on that island. The national, the national speed limit is 31 miles per hour. That's it. The building code, listen to this. No tall buildings. The law mandates that no building on Raigao Tonga, the biggest island of that Cook Island chain, can be taller than a coconut tree. And I don't know how they interpret that when they build their houses, I have no idea, but that's the actual law. There's no how many feet, it just said, any building, you know, you wanna build cannot be taller than the coconut tree. There's no fast food chain, you cannot find any international fast food chain like McDonald, KFC, Starbucks in the Cook Islands, no brand-name hotel like Marriott, IHG, Hyatt, Hilton. Yeah, that was some of the really fun facts about that island. It's about 12 hours flight from here. You can go from here to Hawaii, Hawaii to that island. Highly recommended, beautiful, very, very beautiful. Now, the serious thing, as you know, my wife and I both decided to retire early. I'd been retired almost a year, and then she chose to retire two months ago. And we wanna travel the world. Our goal was to visit at least 75 countries before we, well, before 2026, but we a little bit behind on that. So far, we completed 52, so we still have 23 more to go. So I have decided that I will not seek my reelection. I shared this with the mayor and the rest of the council already, but I want the public to know, so that if any one of you interested to run for this position, please do so. It's been honored for me to, you know, be here with this group, wonderful group of people. But I think because of our travel schedule, I mean, we plan to spend four, five months outside the US every year, starting in 2026. And with that schedule, I don't think it's fair for me to continue, assuming I win, if I run, but I don't think it's fair, you know, for me to stay here. So I would encourage anyone who have a desire to run for this position, to serve the people of this city, please do so. So, I am my report.
Alright, thank you very much, appreciate it. Councilmember Walsh?
First, if Councilmember Tran wants me to put me in his luggage, I mean, I'll resign right now. I mean, just, so anyway. Prior to the next time that we meet, a certain council member is getting married, and I would like to congratulate Councilmember Paul McDaniel on that. And just remember, a single man's incomplete, a married man's finished. But, no, it's wonderful, congratulations, my deepest, my deepest congratulations on that, marriage is wonderful, my, at least I think so. My wife has had to put up with me, in September, it'll be 43 years that she's put up with me, so anyway, she's obviously a very patient woman. But once again, Paul, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And that is my report.
Alright, alright, great. Councilmember W.
I just have a couple things. One, I wanted to thank Bill Vedino for all he's done for the Dave Ramsey financial projects we have, and next meeting, we're actually going to be having a certificate or talking about, Bob Towns' wife is going to be here as one of the people who helped us start that, and we have over 170 people go through that class, and we'll be starting a new one at the, very shortly, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And then, many of you know, some students are coming from Hachinoe at the end of the month. I don't know if they still need people to take the kids in, we're having two at our house when they're here, and I don't know if they've contacted anyone at the city, but last time I talked to them, they're still short places for children, or the students to stay for two nights, so I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And that is my report, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Council President?
Family stuff, my, oh, great-granddaughter made her first communion this last Saturday. Now, in the Catholic religion, and in other religions, Lutheran and Islamic, they, you know, get all dressed up in a little white dress and a veil, and look a lot like, very, very pretty. Now, she's a tomboy, so she's raised, being raised by her grandfather and lots of fellas around, but no, not the female influence, so all she could say was, I'm not wearing a dress, not happening, not going to any first communion. So finally, on the day of, we finally get her into this beautiful white dress with a long and beautiful little diamonds on it, and beautiful little veil, and she twirls around, and she says, I love it. Months, months of pain. So, at any rate, it worked, so we're good, no reports, sir.
Alright, well, to the mothers on the dais and to the mothers in the community, we all say, a very, very happy Mother's Day. And with that, we are adjourned.